Okay, alright. We'll call this meeting to order. It's for development strategies to do the follow-up on our work session, part two. So Matt, we're gonna jump right in. We appreciate you and Marion being here. And we'll turn it over to you unless Andy, Art, Ali, anyone else. Alright, Matt, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you all so much. Appreciate you making the extra time. Glad the technology is working relatively better today. And I understand some of you may have a hard stop at six. So kinda without further ado, I'll dive into it here. So, uh... Hold this up here. And... Okay, great. So, um, I assume y'all can see my screen. And, uh, yeah, I wanted to kinda pick up where we left off. So, uh, obviously what we had done is kind of walked you through, um, the community benefits and, you know, visualized, uh, what those public amenities could look like from a conceptual level. And it's important to note that these are conceptual, but there are, you know, real numbers behind these. And a real quick review, kinda where we are in the process, step three. So it's refinement, it's working toward a preferred plan. And what we'd like to do is, you know, we got some feedback from you all at the last meeting. And so what we'd like is, you know, after the feedback we get, you know, to have a couple of weeks to refine this and, you know, make edits based on what you all have told us. So with that, kinda wanna go into the next part. I wanna talk to you a little bit about market and feasibility considerations. I think there's some important things to share with you all that I think really underscore a lot of the why, why you see the things drawn, um, and the programs, uses that you see. And then you all have sent us a bunch of written questions. So I think we will have addressed about half of them in this presentation. And I'd like to kinda try to address several more at a high level and leave time for Q&amp;A. So with that, wanted to dive into this, dive into some market considerations. I just realized, I just realized I need to do screen, don't I? So, there we go. Um, 'cause I know some of you have had questions about how we get this information. And, um, this company actually was founded, um, as a real estate and market research and economic development firm first. Uh, we have expanded to do, uh, public engagement, urban design, public policy. Uh, but this is how we started. We are a national leader, um, done over five thousand market studies nationally, forty-seven states. We haven't done a market study in Alaska, Hawaii, or Maine, but we will, we will get there. Um, what, um, I can share with you all, I know people have questions about data sources, and I wanna share some of those secondary sources. But I also wanna underscore that what makes us who we are and makes us good at what we do as the primary research that we do. The secondary research, we have a lot of subscriptions, national, uh, from leading national data providers, CoStar, DTOP, uh, data provider for, uh, commercial, uh, commercial real estate data. And in that sense, I mean, that also includes apartment data. Um, we subscribe to multiple listing services. Uh, we get cost estimation data from Marshall Swift, kind of the recognized leader in, uh, construction cost information. Uh, we subscribe to a number of data aggregators, including Esbri. Uh, we do a lot of housing policy research. We do a lot of work nationally that's focused on housing and attainable housing, workforce housing, affordable housing. Um, and we, uh, we try to stay up on the latest research and literature from the top academic institutions, um, and so on and so forth. Uh, Federal Reserve's actually can be a pretty good source of kind of, um, macroeconomic real estate data, and so we like to follow those trends as well. And web-based aggregators, things like Zillow are the best at valuing your individual home, but the data is phenomenal for tracking neighborhoods, uh, and, uh, over time. And such an improvement from the data we had available when I started doing this twenty years ago. Uh, but the primary research, as I said, is really what, uh, is really what's important, what makes us, uh, different than folks that are simply pulling in that secondary research. Um, a lot of real estate data, you've gotta confirm it on the ground. And so that means talking to leasing agents of properties, talking to property owners, talking to developers, brokers, realtors. Uh, we've done quite a bit of that. Uh, and, uh, a lot of times, uh, when we're doing stakeholder interviews, community interviews, we're also focus grouping folks to understand what their, um, what their situation is. What are you paying in rent? What's, what, you know, uh, what is affordable to you, right? Getting that ground level, uh, um, commentary as well. Um, and one other thing, uh, that's worth mentioning is clinical experience and kind of a meta-analysis. I mean, just off the top of my head, we're working in Lansing, Michigan, Blacksburg, Gainesville, and Manhattan, Kansas. So there's, you know, five university communities that we're working in and seeing a lot of these, a lot of these patterns and trends, um, and, and kind of aggregating and what we know and applying that, um, to this as well. So wanted to share that with you. I want you to know that we, uh, we are expert at this. We take market analysis and valuing of real estate very seriously, um, and you can trust our numbers. Um, and, you know, at a high level, what goes into valuing and understanding the economics of real estate, rents and revenue is just a small piece. Uh, it's estimating construction costs, land values, lending and risk assumptions, it's understanding, uh, parking densities and, and development densities, mixed uses, environmental remediation, taxation subsidy, infrastructure. We've looked at all of this, um, at a level that's appropriate for a planning study. And, you know, what we're doing at the highest level is we're saying, okay, how much does it cost to build something? And what's the market value as informed by market rents, what it costs to operate different types of real estate and so on. So I wanted to share this with you because, um, what I want, you know, I want you to know that the things that we're showing you are shaped by a winnowing down of what's possible from a real estate side, listening to the community, and really trying to think about what's, what's realistic, what's viable, what's practical. And so, you know, there's hundreds if not thousands of data points we could share, but the most important one that we wanna share with for you all is this. So we looked at, um, these two market rents. Um, what if one were to do non-student housing, um, entirely, um, on this area that we're looking at versus, uh, this kind of purpose-built student house? And the rent per square foot, a dollar seventy-five versus two sixty-five. Okay, what does that mean? What does this mean for project feasibility? So this is the long and short of it. We wanna share this slide with you, this is really important. So in that yellow student-oriented box, what if all the residential west of college was student-oriented? It would generate a three million, three million dollar surplus if I were a developer, which I am not, by the way, uh, and we are not, okay? We've been third-party analysts, uh, for the entirety of our, uh, thirty-five-year existence, thirty-four. So that would generate a three million dollar surplus, including sixteen, the sixty million dollars of amenities that we've done our best to illustrate for you all. Uh, versus at a dollar seventy-five a square foot, at the land values that we understand for this particular site, which are among the highest land values in your community, there's a fifty million dollar gap. In other words, if I were a private developer and I were evaluating the numbers and I wanted to do this development, I would take a loss of fifty million dollars. Another way of looking at it is somebody, the city, an institution, somebody would have to say, hey, here's fifty million dollars that would make this project work for non-student housing, but I'm never going to get back as an investment, not investment money. Um, that is a sunk cost to make that happen. And that is exclusive of any development of any amenity. So I wanna share this with you because the reason we're showing you what we're showing you versus some of the other possibility, uh, that have been discussed is for this. And I wanna also say there's, you know, at, at a planning level, there's probably a five, ten percent margin of error for this analysis, uh, at this phase. Um, and so on the student side, what that means is you've more or less got a break-even project that likely has money available for amenities. Um, versus, um, in the most optimistic scenario for the non-student housing component, it is not economically viable, it's nowhere near a universe of something that could be made economically viable even with public subsidy and public incentive. So I wanna share that with you, I want, I want you all to, to understand this because it's shaped why we've drawn what we've drawn. And just a little bit more on that, um, little bit of a review of some of our market analysis, um, estimated ten-year demand for student housing, four thousand net beds. But more importantly, twenty-three hundred upscale beds. And what we mean by that are beds close to campus, not across the lake or something. There's going to be a market, no matter how many housing units get built outside of town, there's always going to be a market for, uh, upscale beds, walking distance, uh, bikeable distance to camp. And that's what we're talking about at two sixty-four a square foot. We also did look at a market for multifamily housing for non-student housing. And that's what we came up with, ten-year demand, uh, for thirteen hundred units. Uh, one might think of some of this as, uh, you know, workforce or upscale or market rate apartment unit, how the rent's about a dollar a square foot cheaper and that, that translates into the economic results that we shared with you. Retail, we only identified thirty thousand square feet of additional local support for, um, uh, retail storefront space, uh, in the kind of downtown, uptown area on the left. There is some strategy whereby you're creating a destination where you, where there's an anchor or two in the development. The kinds of things that we were talking about, uh, could really help expand the opportunity for local business, for entrepreneurs, uh, for retail, uh, both in the development and , uh, along College Avenue, uh, in existing storefront space that hasn't been filled and potential future space through development. Um, and then office, this is largely an untested market in Clemson. But we did look at the demand for, ten-year demand for, um, kind of non-university-based, uh, what we call, you know, white-collar jobs. And there is potential for some growth there, and that could be a component in a development. And then we always like to talk, you know, there's always opportunities to, um, add art and cultural, uh, teneting as part of an overall development. Uh, just usually the, there needs to be some kind of rent subsidy to make that happen. Um, so, and we'll definitely pause to talk about this. I know it's very important, I wanna make sure that we're responding to the questions you all asked. Um, some of the comments we got were, you know, what did the public say? Uh, and this is actually something from, um, our first effort, the strategic plan. And, uh, you can see this was, these were the responses specific to uptown. And you can see, you know, uh, overall support for growth and development in the area. Uh, people like the idea of things like business incubators, ground floor retail, expanded art, civic uses, enhanced lake access, they love that. Uh, you could see sixty-one percent, uh, for a mix of student, non-student housing, um, which if you look at the larger area that we're talking about, that's what, that's what you'll see, and we'll come back to that. So it's not, it's not a hundred percent consensus, but it is sixty-one percent of the community said, okay, we, you know, we, uh, you know, we're generally favorable to that. Um, I wanna go to one other element and, computer's freezing up there, here we go. Um, and then this is a question that we asked about specifically about amenities in this process, in the uptown process. And the responses we got, the, the greatest amount of support for any amenities that we discussed is for outdoor dining, which is something we tried to incorporate throughout. Uh, and number two was the nature playscape. Basically tied with that was the community plaza. We've, uh, I think tried to include about, we've included about three plazas in the development. Um, a local foods market, which could absolutely be a part of a, of a program, uh, within this development. I think there's a number of sites that could be really, uh, attractive for that. That would require at minimum, uh, probably a uni-, uh, I mean, I'm sorry, a big community and development partnership. Um, and there might be potential for a university partnership. It had, you know, some support for an outdoor stage, um, urban retail anchor was, uh, I think, you know, less, I wouldn't say it was unfavorable to folks, but it was like, it was less exciting as an amenity to folks than some of these other things. However, we think it's an important part of, uh, a strategy to help fill retail storefronts, help those outdoor dining, uh, folks survive and thrive throughout, throughout the year, right? So anyway, we did ask questions specific to amenities. Um, what we haven't shown folks is these 3D drawings that really illustrate, uh, a community benefit and, and, and those trade-offs in a more direct way. So I wanna kinda come back to this, uh, for a second and share a couple of other thoughts with you all. And, um, you know, I think that we, you know, we heard some comments about adding more, uh, you know, more dining or retail, uh, closer to the park. And I think that, again, to a degree, this could be really traded and supported as a destination. Uh, if there's some kind of anchor, like a brewery, like a, some kind of food hall that might, um, actually have more temporary spaces, lower rent spaces, that could help support a greater diversity of, uh, of, of business owners and restaurateurs from the community at lower rents that could help them get started. If there could be programming, like, you know, uh, Friday food event that could help support that, um, I think there could be, we think there could be some real potential for that. So you all kinda got us thinking in the last meeting, there's more we could talk about that. But one other thing, one other thought I wanted to share with you all, which is, as we think about amenity and thinking about this station in particular, from this boardwalk concept that we shared with you all, um, we think, you know, it's possible that with the development of all this amenity, that it could change the market dynamic, okay? So, and by that I mean, the potential for some non-student market-based housing might be more possible once all of this amenity is developed. You know, because we can say we can give you market opportunity and what is bankable and investable today, but we can also say we've seen plenty of times where there's investment in the public realm and it starts to change that dynamic. We still think you need that profitability of the student housing to underwrite these improvements, but we think over time, that's gonna make the housing on the other side of College Avenue much more marketable to, for non-student housing in later phases as this, uh, as these park amenities get developed. And it's not, again, we can't say with certainty, um, that in the later phase, once these amenities are developed, that, you know, it might not be economically viable to do some component of non-student housing. So I wanted to share that thought with you. Again, it's a, it's a humbling profession. Uh, it takes a lot of, takes a lot of imagination to, and a lot of phasing, uh, and, and financial strategy to get to a point where you amenitize something so much so that it appeals to markets and demographics that, that a place does not today. But I did wanna share that with you all. And I wanted to just run through some of these written questions. Um, I think we're, we're almost at the half-hour mark, so I'll try to maybe keep these comments to, you know, some answers to five or ten minutes. So I'll, I'll try to answer them at a high level and, uh, and leave some time for comment 'cause I, I know you all have a hard stop. So, um, you know, one, student versus non-student economics, uh, we shared that with you, we've shared some of our, um, market data, or at least our methods of how we get it, which I think was part of the question. Uh, we, I think at the last meeting, we really focused on community benefits and item four of that vision for the project and who the intended audience is on. We talked a bit about the allowances under current zoning. And what we think you'd likely see are, one, proposals for, um, you know, kind of auto, you know, auto-oriented, uh, food franchises. Uh, and, you know, we think you'd get proposals for kind of parcelized multifamily housing, um, of, that, that still targets students by and large. Um, it's just not done in a way that's cohesive, that allows you to aggregate land and create amenity and, um, those types of things. And for that matter, address things like curb cuts and, and internal, internal circulation, which is a key to getting traffic off the main road. So, um, traffic impacts, our understanding is, and, uh, that there's going to be a broader traffic study, so, um, that's gonna be done next year, that looks at the whole city. So, um, what we would expect it to say is that there's going to be an increase of development outside your community that's gonna impact traffic. Um, the more you can put development closer to where people are trying to get each day, the, the more you can bend that curve of increased traffic development. Um, item seven, examples, master developer projects. We showed you a bit of that, we, we took you briefly to Blacksburg, uh, to University East City, uh, which is where Washington University is, and we took you, um, to Ohio State, just very briefly. Uh, we can certainly, uh, share a lot more details on those projects, we know them well. Um, you know, and, uh, long and short of it is, each one has a slightly different arrangement with, you know, city and developers, city, developer and institution. Um, and so there's no one way of, of doing this, but there's, you know, the idea of doing a bigger assembly and how that allows you to think about circulation and parking in public space. Um, this is, that's, you know, this is the best practice of how to do it, and it can be done and has been done elsewhere. Um, Abernathy Park expansion, is it possible without development? Um, you know, so just some thoughts to share with you all, um, you know, to acquire for, say, three to five acres at, you know, maybe, let's say to acquire five acres at, uh, you know, two to three million an acre, you're talking about a ten to fifteen million acquisition. Um, and that doesn't include money for improvements, right? So yes, it's possible. Um, I think we can, you know, we put sort of a high-level dollar amount of what that would involve, uh, what we put forth as a strategy for more of a public-private partnership in order to get there. Uh, but certainly that, you know, it's something for any community to consider, to consider, um, land acquisition for park and amenity and, and so you have sort of a, you know, we sort of put a cost to that, um, at a high level. Data on resident use on trade-offs, um, you know, you can see, you know, the kind of questions we ask. We didn't necessarily ask, you know, uh, we don't in public meetings ask for like a, you know, would you do this for this kind of deal? What we're trying to do is put forth a holistic vision that is economically viable and realistic and saying, you know, based on the top priorities that you all said that you'd like to see from this site in terms of amenities, you know, what do you think about this overall vision? Um, are we checking the boxes? Does this look like something that, you know, you would get benefit from? Um, and that's, that's the one thing we haven't done, is really come back with these 3D illustrations that I think really, um, uh, I think better articulate, uh, what the, what the opportunity side of that equation is. And last, I saved this for last on purpose, property acquisition challenges. Um, I do wanna be clear that, um, you know, major site assembly is challenging. You know, it's a highly visible site, uh, this would be one of the biggest, if not the biggest undertaking, uh, the city's ever engaged in, biggest partnership. Um, and, you know, what I would say to that is, you know, great development, does take, does take work, it does take effort. I don't believe that this is a community that's afraid of, you know, hard work and challenge. I can tell you that, um, in Blacksburg, it took several years to assemble property and keep it, uh, under property ownership. We are on calls with the city manager twice a month and have been so for the past five years. Uh, so it is a, it is a five, ten-year phased project. It will take time and it does take a lot of coordination amongst property owners. Um, it will take re-, significant resources, in terms of personnel time, uh, from the city. So I don't wanna make any bones about it being easy. I will say that other communities that have done it, if you talk to them, the case studies that we've shared, um, they can't imagine having not done it and not put in that effort and, and, and gotten the, the results that they did. So I, you know, I'm trying to address that at a high level because I, I know we've got a limited amount of time and, you know, I'm happy to go back, revisit slides, uh, but I kinda wanna, kinda wanna pause at this point with, um, and maybe I'll just pull up the kind of, whoops, I'll pull up the overall image. Um, so we have that handy, but otherwise, you know, want to, uh, respond to the questions you all have and kinda turn the floor back to you all.
So Matt, in the, um, drawing you have up there now, um, you have actually, in this situation, you have changed those buildings around that plaza to non-resi-, to non-student by color, it looks like, right?
Yeah, in this scenario. So this is a scenario that we think is less likely, but, but not, uh, but it's possible. We would not preclude the possibility of, of that, yes.
Well, the reason I even ask that is I think that that obviously would be something that'd be easier digested in this community. Uh, and then, you know, then you've got the buildings behind that, which is kinda backing up a little bit away, further away from the park. I think one of the things that people probably would say to us is that with all the amenities we are doing with Abernathy Park, et cetera, et cetera, you're still gonna have this huge influx of students in there. I guess maybe the intent for most is it was gonna be a community destination, or so it was student destination. So by making those buildings a possible non-student, at least that takes some of the pressure off of that conversation. That's just a, I'll space my, well. Now, the other question I've got is you've got across the street on, on the college, that's all non-student. Was to say that some of that couldn't be student and some of the other interior buildings could be non-student, you know, was the possibility of that?
Yeah, and I think that, um, you know, just to share some thoughts on that, um, on that second part, um, I think it's possible, again, what we have is the economics, right? So I mean, I wanna be clear, like, we, every single, based on our economics, every non-student unit that's built on this particular area where the land costs are relatively higher loses money. So the more dense you go, the more money you lose. There's no way to, there's, there's no equation in which doing more makes money. And so we feel like this is the most honest representation. We feel like, once those amenities are built, and this is, again, this is in a public or, you know, largely privately financed scenario, but assuming public-private partnerships, you know, we feel very confident that those amenities will be marketable, uh, make the other side of the street more marketable to non-students. Um, it's just that that revenue is needed somehow to make this happen. And I also wanna add, like, part of, part of an arrangement with the developer and part of what, um, the city can bring in a partnership is, um, is code enforcement, uh, police enforcement, programming of park efforts, like, we have, we watch, we wanna be clear, like, uh, there are any number of things that you all can do and would do, um, to make this open and available to a broader section of the public, like a broad segment, right? You can do a lot with programming and you can do a lot with, uh, a lot with code enforcement that, um, you know, I, the developments that we've shared with you, um, are not, you know, exclusive to students, uh, you know, the community has used the amenities in those, in those developments. Um, and, you know, we'd be happy to put you in touch with those folks, uh, to tell you those, tell you the stories of those.
Matt, with another way, I guess, to kinda get to the middle of this, what John Fulmer was looking at is if you did orient one of those buildings more to the non-student housing, which you feel like is roughly thirty-four percent, something less per square foot, add another story to one or two of these other student-focused buildings and try to capture some of the, there maybe one could do the elevations, you can kinda lose that height from eye appearance, but capture it economically and, and maybe gain one of those buildings that he's talking about here.
Absolutely. I mean, short answer is yes. You could add more density somewhere else in the development and that starts to make, uh, that, that gives you more revenue to apply to amenity or making non-student housing more viable, absolutely.
Now, I'd be just kind of, as a rock star, is this is, you know, the world may come in with some different ideas and different stuff, and this captures what it takes to do it, but...
some different ideas and different stuff, and this captures what it takes to do it. But we're not setting this in stone, this is exact law, and then we can come back with exact numbers. So personally, I'd kind of be open to following this model right here. If somebody chose a different way to make their nut, if they saw this on economic side, and pick up some other benefits, and that's good. But we don't want to put a baby out in bathwater and lose the amenities and lose the protections by saying, oh no, it's student housing.
So when we do the RFQ, we would include that drawing or some drawing similar to that? Would we do that?
I believe that implies that's not.
I was just asking, I guess we were looking at handles. That's a, that's a Matt question there.
Um, yeah, so I mean, I think one of the things we would do is, you know, already getting some feedback here, I think, you know, we've made some refinements to this, but that's absolutely the goal of this, to send a really clear picture, um, to prospective developers out there that, hey, here is an economically viable development that if you can deliver on this, there's a path to approval for this. And that's, so that's sending a strong message. This is, this is what we want to see, and certainly you'd welcome creativity, uh, but also I think there's an understanding that, hey, there's been a public process and a strategic plan prior to that and a lot of, a lot of consideration going into this. So this is a pretty strong articulation of what threads a needle between economically viable and, you know, approvable. So I think it's, it's definitely, you, you want to include this in there, um, and it's a great place to start, uh, a conversation in a partnership to have, you know, for both of you to be looking at the same image. Um, that's what we've seen, the alternative is you've got two people talking for six months or two years, and they both sound like they're on the same page and so they start drawing stuff. And then, um, that's not a, I could tell you it's not a good place to be in for anybody. So, this definitely advances, um, this, this really, you know, it moves you several paces forward, uh, in having a conversation with a quality developer.
So, so Matt, I guess a lot of this conversation really is built on a foundation, which I still don't understand. Um, one of your first slides talked about a fifty million dollar gap, if it was non-student housing, the three million dollars surplus if it was. I had no idea what gap you're talking about. If it's a gap between what and what, and what's the evidence for that?
Sure. Um, let me pull up a, a conceptual diagram. Um, so essentially, this is what we're talking about. So, you know, there's, like, the, in order to develop this real, you know, the, the real estate that we're drawing, there's a construction cost, there's a, a cost of land, which is actually quite high in this particular area. So, that's, like, I also want to say, like, there are other parts of your community, other, um, places that we identified in the strategic plan, that the economics would be much more favorable for workforce housing, for non-student housing. In fact, um, doing student housing here would enable the community to say, and the market, to send this, a signal that, hey, student housing's going here, so these, uh, these other areas are open for workforce housing and the attainable housing that we need. So, so what we're saying is it's going to cost this much to build and there's a market value, if you will, um, to that development. And, and that's largely driven by how high the rents are. And so, in this instance, um, so you have a viable development when the value of these developments, the amount of rent that can be secured over a period of time and used to pay down, uh, the operations of a facility and the construction, is equal to or greater than the construction cost. And so what we're saying is with that student, with student housing, it is equal. Uh, it pays for itself. The project will, will, uh, pay for itself. And what, and what we're saying with non-student housing is that there's this gap. In other words, the market value conceptually falls well short of what it would take to build it. So, so then nobody will build it because there's no, there's no economic rationale for doing so. So it's not real, um, based on our analysis.
But Matt, aren't you really s-
I think you may misunderstand my question. I understand what you said, but to me, the gap implies there's something we want, we don't have, and that this will help pay for it. I don't understand what that thing is, we want, we don't have, you just, your answer just implied if you do nothing there, you're still going to have this gap. But what, what is the, what are the items that causes gap?
It's not, it's not our gap, it's the gap of the developer.
Well, why do we worry about the developer?
Because at the end of the day, he's not going to do it, I mean, think about it, these projects are going to be flipped, they're going to be sold. Okay, so at the end of the day, where that blue line is right now, where the market value is, where it's less than that, if it's not student housing, it gets to that because it is student housing because it's more saleable.
But it gets to what?
It gets to that market value number, so he's now got a three million dollar profit essentially versus-
But I thought, I thought the rationale to do this was that he was going to run into other wonderful things. This gets back to trade-off analysis, that by doing this, we're going to be able to do other things. Now, I didn't understand your, your answer, giving it a perspective, that the other things were the things in this triangle. I thought the other things were things beyond the triangle that the city needs. So I guess I'm just trying to get a very itemized sense of what the gaps are. So, you know, what, what, what this answer replies to me is that after we do nothing, it's going to cost us fifty million dollars. How's that?
No, 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 no. He's saying, he's saying that if, if, if we wanted, if we wanted to have all non-student housing in there, that's not going to happen with market conditions at a dollar seventy-five a square foot because it will have a fifty million, you know, you're not going to make the money to make the project even. So there's no headroom for the developer or us to negotiate with the developer to say, we want an improved Abernathy Park, or, and, and these are just ideas. We might say, we want a contribution to a neighborhood preservation, um, program, you know, of a half a million dollars that will help us keep people in their homes in low-income, historically African-American neighborhoods. It might be a contribution to the downtown, uh, street corridor plan. So, we're, they're showing some possibilities of what could happen, Abernathy Park, public space, like, there, but it takes the two dollar and sixty-five cent per square foot student housing number in the density that you get there to get to the point where if you can, you've got that negotiation because you know there's a surplus in there that you're going to negotiate with the company, with the developers for. It's not that if we do nothing, it's just, the question has been, well, why can't it be non-student housing? The reason it can't is because when you do the land costs and the construction cost at the rent that you would charge for non-student housing, that developer would have a fifty million dollar deficit.
There's no market.
There's no market.
But that's why I'm going back to the fact that you-
Sixteen and three, that's sixteen and three are to the developer. That is the city, that's nineteen million dollars to the city in the way I view it. Sixteen of it, the way I'm looking at this graph, is this a desert, like I didn't know Bob talking about, whether it be Abernathy or whatever, things. And there's a three million dollar surplus above that if you go to front of that, so you go to front of any other development, you know. So you get the sixteen paid for, and you've got three extra to put towards other projects. And then on top of that, the money that you would have had to divert, we're not even talking about here, we're talking about the project specifically. So those other city resources that are thrown at Abernathy is all there, is going to free you up again with all those reasons.
I guess, I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out, what are those things? Because otherwise, this appears to me to be, we're searching for a way to have a developer committed and make money on that project, kind of closed it. But why should we do that? I mean, this gets back to the analysis, and this has been a conjoint analysis that really did compare different things like trade-offs and reset the residents. If we do this here, you can have this here, but if we do this here, that means there will be student housing in the middle of this development. Are you going to do both of those things? In other words, this is an item analysis rather than some kind of analysis that looks at a integrated office. I still don't, I don't understand the logic. You know, I, I understand the math, the science, you know, I don't understand the logic. I lose money if you don't do anything, whereas it's the developer that loses money, who's not willing to take the risk. I don't know that, you know.
And, and the only thing to add to what, what I, I, I hear friends, but these numbers is based on, if I'm looking at this correct, it's just with all residential, that's the surplus. I guess what I was trying to say more of is more, is there a balance, give and take? Cause I, I haven't, I haven't, I haven't really seen what that looks like if we do less student housing, more non-student housing, vice versa, what that, because what, what that graphic is showing us is if it's all one or the other. But where is the, the, the information, what, as I'm through with the trade-offs, but where's the other information that I think we were asking for is what, what would be the, the numbers if you had less than the, the, what was it, two thousand, how many beds did we talk about?
Eighteen.
Eighteen hundred beds.
Yeah, eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred beds. But is that all, but that, no, he said all, all student.
The eighteen hundred were student beds and then there were some other beds too.
But that, but that graphic, if you go back to that first, go back to that slide with all.
To the left-hand column, left-
No, the one that he, he showed when Fran was talking.
Matt, Matt, let me, let me just see if I can say this in the simplest terms.
Because it says one if all, so, but we're talking with all, so I'm, I, because we're not talking about all.
We're going to break even.
Yes, that's what I'm looking for.
But what he's saying is every, everything that is not a student luxury, high-value bed in there loses money. The developer is losing money on everything that is not a, not a student bed.
Not if it's empty.
Well, I think that, you know-
But, but it says, but that still says all.
I think we got to keep one thing in mind. This is, this is obviously their, their concept, their view, and all that kind of stuff. We don't know how, when we put it out for an RFQ, we don't know how that hopefully two or three come back and look at it, how they may look at it. We're not going to know that until we go, we, we got to move on down the road and to, to get there. And I think we have to show some concepts, because somebody else may have a different idea, or we may be able to negotiate something different. I think we got to remember that. I think the one thing that's important to me though, is at least we have demonstrated that you can expand Abernathy Park and do some things, and I like the fact that you can do something on that park, that plaza, where you want to call that to that creep. So at least we have shown, these are some things we can do, but we don't know what developer A, B, C, or D might say when they come back with a plan or-
Well, I would like to go back to the week ten to overlook in this conversation, and I feel like, is there is a cost to doing nothing about the local plan that is economically viable? And that cost is nobody can assume of this property, and each piece could develop by rights. And you will have a pod, pod of student housing, and the commercial is there to may or may out once. So, it, it is great to talk about it theoretically, and what type of housing they have, what type of housing you do this, but remember there is another alternative, and that alternative is individuals that go in with nothing in there. So if you want a lot of students have planned manner, where are they going to make money? We can watch it or not, but the developers are here to make money, but we want to make sure we get our benefits.
So, so Matt, it, could you, like, do, uh, uh, not right now, obviously, but do, so you've got nineteen million dollars of surplus in there, what would it look like if you took the nineteen million dollars of surplus out that's paying for Abernathy Park and the, the plazas and those kind of things? And then if you balance that and use that for non-student housing, what the break-even point looks like when we don't get the community benefit of an improved, expanded Abernathy Park and that plaza?
But see, again, you're making it absolute, and I'm like-
But it's, that's the break-even point.
But, but just be, this is what I don't quite understand, is non-student housing, first of all, I don't understand how there's that many. Number two is, I don't quite understand why it loses money. I don't know that people have been building apartment complexes around here for a long time, and no one seems to be losing money. Um, and so that is confusing to me. And so then the, the question is, if there is a way to do better balance, I mean, to complete, you know, that's, that's the question. And, and/or, to get to John's point, perhaps if we show this to a developer, um, my concern is that it's going to come back with even less than the already, what, seventeen percent green space? Um, the, you know, more student beds, more high-rises. And, you know, having just seen the effect that high-rise student housing has on a community, it, it blocks the sun. It blocks the sun, it limits it to nothing but concrete in that area. And so, um, I'm even more hesitant than I was before to, to support high-rise student housing. But that's it, I agree with you. I think that's the question, Matt. I don't, I don't quite understand the, the all or nothing, the eighteen hundred student beds versus fourteen hundred student beds. And I, in a, in a good projection model, you should be able to manipulate those numbers so that, to see what, how that shifts your balance.
So, I'd like to respond to a couple things. So I'd like to respond to Alicia first, uh, just to say, I just, I want to share with you, we've got almost a hundred thousand square feet of commercial space when we look at office and retail. Part of what we've done, um, is not absolute, we have shown a mix of, uh, development on here, and we've used the profitability of some of the student housing to put, um, retail that the market can support, uh, on here. So a hundred thousand square feet of retail slash office is not an insignificant amount. And I think one of the things we can do is work on another concept that again, has something more like a business incubator, a food incubator, uh, that could be kind of a destination. If you can program it right with a vest, uh, that could really help, uh, increase the diversity of small businesses. Uh, and we think if you created a destination, you could start to draw in some market support, really help those business owners. That's what some of the park amenities can do. So, um, I want to be clear, part of what we were showing was the contrast of student housing versus non-student housing, because we wanted to isolate that for a moment so that you could see the economic impacts of that the way we see them. So, certainly not presenting anything as absolute, but we are saying, non-student housing with the land costs here does not work. Now, could we do something where we leverage the money, uh, you know, some of the profitability to help pay for, um, non-student housing? Yes, and in fact, we have. So we can bring that and show that to you again, but that was something that in previous conversations, what we heard from you all, or thought we heard, was the amenities are more important to us. And so, again, every, so we can, we can go back, we can revisit those, um, because that is another way of thinking about what to do with the surplus. And we can use it to underwrite, um, non-student housing. Uh, but every dollar that you put into that is a dollar you're going to take away from some of the park investments. So, what we're trying to share with you all is that there are, uh, there is revenue to be generated from this project, um, and you can spend it in some different ways to fund some different priorities. Um, and we're happy to allocate relatively more or less of that, those priorities to different uses. Uh, but what you do have here is something that has, uh, a mix of retail and office and hotel that's economically viable. Um, and I think that's the most important thing, and I think that several of you said it right, that, um, I think what you're, what the real decision is at this point is whether to move forward with something that leverages some of, you know, leverages, uh, you know, student, high-quality student housing development to create a number of community benefits versus, um, getting piecemeal proposals under current zoning that still probably include student housing, but it's done in a, a less, um, coherent, cohesive way, one that doesn't generate, uh, spin-off revenue that you can aggregate to create benefits. And so, that's what we're, we're trying to present to you all, a realistic decision matrix, um, for you all to make. And again, if we, if the desire was to spend relatively more resources on non-student housing and not amenity, uh, we're, we can, we can draw that as well. Uh, but that wasn't, that wasn't what we understood to, to have heard, uh, from you all. So, it is a balance, uh, for sure. And that's, I mean, if there's anything we want you all to understand, like, or to empower you all with in terms of knowledge, it's that there's a balance between these things. Um, and you can fund some community benefits, some significant ones, uh, from the revenue that a private development like this could generate. Um, and we think to the degree we can get your priorities illustrated best, uh, you're going to move several paces ahead in terms of a clear conversation with somebody who could partner with you to actualize it.
So Matt, what, maybe I misunderstood what you just said, but if not, I think we have to focus on that. Did you say that you understood from us that amenities are more important than type of housing? Because if, if the case- Because if it's the case, and I think you said, I, I would disagree. I don't think many people in the city would agree, and neither the council or the other that, that amenities are more important. And this gets back to the trade-offs, which is bad. I think most people would tell you that they don't want to trade amenities for student housing. And it's a difference that goes up instead. So, yeah, and I don't agree, and I don't know where that, that statement came from. Is that from the data? Was that from us? Did I understand what you said? Cause I don't get any sense from the people I talked to, that they would trade high-density student housing for any possible amenity in that part of town. Now, the answer is, you guys gave a nice report for us, and we have other places that student housing that are more agreeable to people. Those for some reason have disappeared right now. Matt, I, I can't agree that people prefer amenities to, or trade high-rise, high-density student-oriented housing for amenities in that section of the city. And if that's the operating principle, I think we need to revisit that and what other people have their own opinion, because I have knocked off that pressure from anyone, that in that area, quite the opposite. They don't want to trade the best amenities possible if it means high-density student housing on those people to make it. I, I don't know where that principle came from, but I think if that's what drew some of this, that's one of those foundational pieces that I think creates a very shaky building. I don't know how you, how you attuned to that and where you got that, but I don't know that at all.
We, we talked about wanting Abernathy Park to be the crown jewel, and this is what it would take for that to happen-
Right.
-at, at part of the development. That's where, that's where that comes-
But I don't think anybody said, and will go and have high-density student housing do that. I think had those things been linked in a conversation or in a survey, you would not have found that that statement had law to public influence. Could be wrong, and I, and we do want Abernathy. I'm not disagreeing with you all, but I'm just-
I'm saying that's where it came from, from, from them, was that every conversation that we had was Abernathy being a crown jewel, Abernathy having something unique that takes advantage of our lakefront. And on the survey and the data that was up there, that's, that's reflected in the survey, including, we're okay with some high-density student housing was in the survey, the sixty-one percent, and the better lakefront access was in there at a very high percentage.
But they weren't conjoined.
That's what I noticed too about that survey too, is the closing.
And that's sometimes, that's where it is our job up here right now, and we may disagree on what it is, but the benefit from the city and country, the amenities and outdoor recreation and the growth and rebirth in that area, this is what it's going to take to get there. There are people who are not going to like whichever decision we make on that.
I, I agree on it, but there might be other places. Bob, you said to me as a question, Frank, would you wish you had, would you like to be a dollar house? Yes, I would rather be a dollar house. And then you said to me, but your tax wouldn't go off, and, and then I changed my, so I think item analysis loses any context about what, which context matters. But anyway, that's, that's not the key.
I listen, so I think we can kick this can down. We, we are now beginning to get into the can kicking. And it's, it's time for us to get to the point where we can put out an RFQ and get started. Because right now, we just delay, delay, delay. We continue to do that. And, you know, I think that we're making a mistake, like, sitting around here asking him to do more and do more and do more. It's just time to move forward.
John, so we are exactly the words for your release, or why we asked Matt to do this.
Well, he-
That is that one sentence in RFQ that talks about fourteen hundred to seventeen hundred student. Now, if we can delete that or modify that, I think we have room, if we ask Matt to come specifically to trigger us, that specific item, now we're just screaming. So you're like, you're not kicking the can, you're really listening to-
Well, no, but I disagree because I think we wanted Matt to show us what this destination could look like and give us some 3D or 2D drawings to make it look like. That's what we really asked. I mean, that eighteen hundred beds or whatever it is hasn't gone away. But we don't know that developer XYZ is going to look at it exactly the same way. We don't know that. I mean, all we know right now is we, we look at it, what we hope this thing can look like, and it's going to have some other residential components, whether they be student housing or whether they be hotel, hotels, whether it be, you know, non-student, whatever it is, it's going to have a housing component. I mean, I have seen that done in other, in other cities and other communities. Even Greenville's got huge housing component to make that deal work. It just happens in those are all apartments, if you think about it, normal apartments or condos. But either way, I just think we got to go, we got to go forward. It's time.
I agree with you one hundred percent. Again, we have decided, maybe we can take a vote to amend it, whether we want that one statement or maybe actually, or something like, I don't know, I don't get a goal or a, I don't get the word, uh, fourteen to sixteen hundred student housing. That's what I and other people, and people in the city object to. I think a week ago, a month ago, we would have approved this RFQ, I would quote it, other than that one sentence. This is helpful, but I think that one sentence that still is a gap, and maybe we can, this is sort of a hit for my perspective, is actually go on the RFQ, make them, if someone wants to make a motion to amend it, to take out that sentence from our part, you'll have that vote, votes yes or no, and then do further. I'm not disagreeing with you, but I think that one sentence is the break in this whole process. We need to figure out how to say that or agree, we're going to disagree, or we're moving. That's all that matters.
Well, I think the one thing about it is, and I think this is whether it be Matt or whether it be some other resources that have stepped forward actually, and, and asked them their opinion, that maybe what you do put in there is, it's going to have to be recognized, it will require a housing component that could be made up of student housing and non-student or whatever the case may be, without actually defining the number.
The developer needs to know that we're going to allow enough student beds to make it possible. That's what's good is, that's where the government comes from, is unless the developer made the real goal with enough beds, they would be up and down, they'd buy a more profitable project.
And that's what Matt has, Matt and the group has come back with. This is the num, this is what it will take for it to be economically viable and get the community benefits that we talked about, like improved Abernathy Park, Plaza, and some additional money that we could have as a negotiating point to put towards other high artists. That's what this is. It's, it's, it's testing, testing those waters to make sure that's where we are from.
But do you, do you not think that the guy that's going to come in here and spend fifty to a hundred million dollars on that land is not going to recognize the fact that it's going to have to have varying houses to come and say?
No, I don't think so.
Oh, my Lord.
I, my only question to, to your point of, I know they gave us the guidelines of the groundwork or what that could look like, but it's still very possible to John's point, that if you don't put that language in there, someone could bring us, can, can provide us with a RFQ that may be better. We don't, we don't know that. We, we just, we, cause these are all still estimates. It's not fact. It's basically on the market, it's nature, but it's still very possible to go to a standard. So I also agree with Frank that we could definitely reword that and move, I agree with you, we need to move forward and, and reword it, but we can't just say, we gotta, we gotta stick with that fourteen hundred beds, we gotta stick with that economic profile, because it's very possible, that it's always possible, that someone could come in with something that's a lot different and maybe just pay, we can go in a different direction. That is possible.
Yeah, Frank, 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 hold on. I'm going to give Matt, Matt, here's an opportunity to kind of, basically these comments kind of wrap things up.
Yeah, now, you know, I, I will say, you know, these are not easy conversations. I mean, they, they do involve dramatic change to your community, and I think that that's important to recognize. And I do think that it's also, you know, it, I, I think part of what, where the conversation is, is, hey, there's, there's some opportunity here and there's, um, you know, I think what you would be doing in moving forward is really entering a, a, a conversation in which you've illustrated some, some of the types of things that you would like to see, uh, in exchange for development. I mean, I think the most, one of, one of the, as, listening to this conversation, one thing I want to clarify is, um, it's not so much a choice between this illustration and something with all these amenities that doesn't come with that development. If you really went forward, you know, kind of with current zoning, the choice that you're, from, from our perspective, the choice that you have, and our professional expertise is, you're, a, a steady stream of proposals and submittals for parcellized student housing, uncoordinated, and largely auto-oriented chain restaurants are the things that are going to, you're going to continue to get proposals for those things. And so your choice is really that future for the next ten years, or this more coordinated effort that harnesses development that you may or may not be excited about, but creates a lot of community benefit and revenue as an alternative. And thus though, in a legal framework that's, you know, that, that avoids legal challenges. And so I think, I think that's important also underscored. We're trying to give you an economic, strategic, legal rationale for getting community benefit, uh, from a site that otherwise I think you're going to see a lot less community benefit. And I think you're going to still get a lot of development proposals for a lot of, for a lot of things that maybe programmatically are similar to what we're showing, but won't be as, um, attractive, well-planned. This is an opportunity to take an amount of, you know, take economics and market activity that's likely to occur and mold it into something that's most beneficial to your community for several decades to come. That's what we've tried to put in front of you. And I think that's really, I want to be clear with you all, I think that's really the decision that you, that, that we see, uh, as you're thinking about the next ten years. Lots of developer proposals for piecemeal development are an opportunity to really assemble this in a way that's really coordinated, cohesive, and, and generates a lot more benefit than it otherwise would, both economic and in terms of amenity.
I think you'll comment to try and wrap it up. I think we got to move it forward. I think it is more than just an estimate they put in, it's well-educated, it's data that the developers have done and used, and it's stronger than the rest in my opinion. But at this point, I think it is to come forward, our next meeting to go on with the numbers, and if somebody wants to amend it, happily wrote it on, and if you stay here and you go. But we're not going to all agree on whether they need to be in there, not be in there not, so I'm going to, I'm going to talk to them. So I just said we got to wrap it up, put on the next agenda, and if you'll notice, the number there is eighteen. It's not eleven.
I know, it's even higher.
Yeah. But I think, I agree, I agree with that, but I think, but this is Matt. I can live with John's suggestion, because no one knows. The reason I can is that, I'll be, I'll be right. But if you're right, all of the RFQ responses will indicate that same thing. We need to open, they will come back with that number. And if they-
So, so, so-
But if they don't come back with that number, then we evaluate what that means. Then your next vote, I would be like Steve Councilman, I would be a bit easier. But I, I would like it, because it might be a very clever, creative, Tom Winkoff kind of idea out there with my, my daughter, that it's all, it says, here's what the, I would like a space without defining it ahead of time. But I know that's-
So, so, yeah, I'm going to wrap this up. Somebody else wants to, you want to wrap us up? We know where the next steps are. We're all going to have our opinions. We can make sure we state those opinions the next meeting, which will be June twenty. Thank you. Um, Matt, Mary, we do appreciate you wrapping this up. Appreciate this second part, showing us the, a vision, showing us what can be done, a coordinated effort, possibly on this site, which I'm encouraged by. Now, we'll emphasize this word, but this is my only time to chime in. Coordinated effort. I really do like his words. He's chosen very well. So, thank you again. Um, if not, we are returned. Have a great evening.
Thank you all.